I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Lo Meyer.
Yep.
Linton.
Aye.
Tice.
Aye.
Carson.
Aye.
Eppenstall.
Aye.
Carson.
Aye.
Jared just walked in.
Jared, you want to vote yea?
What's that?
We're on the adopt the agenda.
Yes, aye. Sure. Sorry.
No gation? Perfect. Any correspondence?
Nope.
Any questions on the Treasurers' report? Nobody? And any questions on the payment of the bills?
We have two big items in there, our bond payments in there, so that's why it's higher than what it is, and also our Three Lakes assessments in there to do that. So that's why it's pretty high for right now. So that's all really to make you aware of, that I'm aware of.
Perfect. All right. I'd like to make the motion to adopt the minutes of the regular board meeting of July 9, 2025, approve the Treasurers' report from July 30, 2025, approve petty cash payment reimbursement for the district office of $290.54, and approve payment of the bills to be allowed in the amount of $1,217,176.19 for August 13, 2025, and July 2025 payroll in the amount of $100,920.39.
Second.
Eppenstall.
Aye.
Bagan.
Aye.
Linton.
Aye.
Carson.
Aye.
Lo Meyer.
Aye.
Tice.
Aye.
Carson.
Aye.
All right, no business, so we'll just move into the budget update.
All right, hopefully you have the right one shared with you. Working between two computers sometimes can be a little hectic, so I don't know if I'm sure if I got the right presentation going on there. So this month is just really an awareness of kind of where we're at with the budget. There's no action tonight. We'll take action next month. We'll have a hearing on R and R and then a budget hearing, but this is just for informational information, so you have this. So you can ask questions when we move into next month, but we'll actually approve the budget, the R and R and the budget next month. So I just want to review some things as we go into the budget and just reminder some things and then kind of give an overall review of what we have right now for the budget as we go into that. So we have our strategic plan in place with our mission and our vision, and we've updated our board goals, and we'll hit on those here in a little bit. And also, we have our higher accountability with the Kansas County outcomes through the State Board of Ed as we go through that. So this is kind of what drives the bus for us as a district, and we make things work around that. Just looking at enrollment, we don't have, you'll have a link in there with enrollment. It's not up to date. As of, we'll know Friday better who shows up and who doesn't. We can get that cleaned up. We still have some things at the high school to clean up with the new secretary and things. So I'll be updating that as we go, but you can kind of get an idea of what our trend has been with enrollment over the last few years. With an average of 688, we had last two years of 692. We budgeted a few higher on that. You'll see on the open page, not just a pad budget, but once our audit happens, it will be what it is. But you still, you want to pad it just a little bit, just in case. You don't want to have to republish the budget if we get a bunch of kids in or something to that effect. So we've padded that a little bit based on history and just knowing what that is. But we should have those probably next week when we get those finalized to find out for sure who's, you know, who's left and who's showing up. So, but you have some kind of words out right now on that spreadsheet that I provided for you, but it will be updated as we go through and finalize enrollment, starting on Friday. Just our FTE is based on last year's FTE, and FTE means full-time equivalency. This is really what our budget's generated upon, depending on how a kid is counted. You know, K through 12 are counted as 1A FTE, preschool is .5 FTE. So based on that, that's how we build the budget, based on full-time equivalency as we go through that. And then we have students that are identified at risk, free lunch is part of that formula, and then transportation, we get waiting for that, and virtual, we get waiting for that. So these are factors that build into the budget. This is what it was for last year. We basically budgeted the same for this year. We're anticipating flat. We're down a couple, virtual, I think we're going to go one less on that. But really, we base it on, you know, what we've done in the prior year for this upcoming budget. Academic overview, state assessments, we don't have that information from last year. State Board Ed this week is approving cut scores for the previous assessment they did. Once they've established the cut scores, then they'll start distributing scores, so they say September. I don't know if it'll get them in September or not, but that's what they're saying is when we'll get them. So, but we won't be able to have that information until they get that done. So I think, I don't know, I didn't see if they got approved today, and we're busy, but.
Back in the paper, it said that the cut scores were approved.
Were they?
Yeah.
Okay, it was, okay. So once they, then they can start processing that based where those are, and we'll get that information to use as that as we go through. So we don't have that for you tonight, but we will be reviewing that. Just some ACT score is still a factor for some students. It's not as important as it used to be, but it still plays a factor, and we still use it as a data point. Last year, we were at 19.5, the state average was 19.2. See some fluctuation, just depends on how that works if it goes through. It's not a real focus of the district, but it is a measure that we have that we utilize and kind of keep an eye on as we go through that. But more and more kids don't necessarily need the ACT. It's kind of going away, but it's still a factor that the State Board of Ed uses as data. And then our post-secondary success, and we remember what this is. This is a measurement where students are two years after they graduate from our district. And so you can see over the last two years, this is based on a five-year average where this information comes from. The main one that I really look at is this effectiveness rate, where it falls. And effectiveness basically based on your risk factors, how successful are those kids being based on our local risk factors, percentage-wise of the percent of graduates that had graduated. And so we're seeing this increase as time goes on. We're at 23, we're at 48%. This is again, based on a five-year average. And then we were above the, our interval, which is, this is where our predicted range should be, and we're falling outside of that, above that, which is good. And as you can see, it's gone up 1%, and we anticipate it to continue to grow with our individual plans to study as we go through that and really look at kids and providing them opportunities to be successful for life after high school. And you can see the state average as we go in this. So this will come up here in a second. Again, we'll revisit this in another slide. But this is where we are currently, or this is where we, we look at it as for post-secondary success. It's a measure that the State Board of Ed has as well. Questions about this one? Again, these are kids that have either earned a technical certificate or associate's degree or still in college, or the ones, or four-year university or something, or they're still in community college, might be, whatever. If they're still enrolled, they're counted as a successful student.
And are those reported back to the state by the colleges?
Yeah, through the National Data Clearinghouse. Not, not everybody, like military doesn't provide that, but it's part, it's just something, we just know that going in. But based on whoever signed up for the clearinghouse, we get that data to do that. So just some highlights from last year. This past year, we did receive the Commissioner's Award from the State Board of Ed, and basically that's a measurement that is based on our post-secondary effectiveness that I just talked about. In that increase that we've had, we've had higher than a .4 to .99 increase. So our district was recognized as for receiving the Commissioner's Award for falling outside of, you know, better than our post-secondary effectiveness in our predicted area. So we're seeing that increase in there, and we're recognized for that as a district. So, which was good. Again, a lot of focus is being put on the IPS, really listening to kids and seeing what they want, trying to put things in place for them, depending on the pathway that they're choosing. So we're getting better at that. District also received a bronze medal, again, for recognition for graduation rate, the copper medal for post-secondary success, and the copper medal, which is six year in a row for being academically prepared. We're consistently seeing that as we go through this. So, and then some other things that we have on there that you see from the highlights from last year. Okay, again, the mission and vision, we've had these established. Very strong mission statement, really drives the bus for us. We have the four goals in place that the board has, and I'm just going to kind of highlight some of the factors that have gone in this past year, looking specifically at curriculum and instruction and assessment. Adopted some ELA reading materials last year to look at that for resource adoption. And then we're going into 2025, we'll be looking at math this year and see what resources are needed there to get those updated. KISS is really driving the bus on curriculum, instruction, and assessment. That's our accreditation model through KSDE. Last year, we identified two areas of focus, which were structured literacy, mainly through letters. Several staff are getting trained, have training today for letters. So we just chose that as one of the areas of focus because of what all we're doing right now with that and the majority of staff being involved with that. The other one was through a process, we narrowed it down to quality instruction, and there's four areas that you would choose from the accreditation model. So through this, in evaluating quality instruction, we were going through this process, and we started yesterday, well, we started in May really, with the district leadership team of professional learning communities and what that model and process looks like. And we did a lot yesterday with that to bring it to the staff and to go through that. I thought it was pretty good, but a lot of questions in there because it's just hard to see conceptually because it's not a concrete sequential process. It's really based on what the conversations that come out of these meetings that we have to see what we need to do and address. And so I know that as we go through these conversations, I believe the focus will come back on instruction to really evaluate the academic progress of our students and evaluating instruction as we go through this. So to help accommodate that, we had more collaboration days with the early releases once a month that we'll be providing. So we're working on, we have a collaboration timeline that we have started based on yesterday, and we got a meeting as an admin team to really kind of start defining what happens each month. So we have a guide for that to go, and that's what the staff is asking for. So we'll be putting that together and have focus of general ed and special ed, and then who's responsible for what and what the main topics were. It could look different, it'll look different in every building. You know, Deana's going to have her plan, and her conversation is way different than what's going on in high school and middle school yesterday. And, but she'll be, you know, setting up that time to make it benefit her building as we go each month. We'll look at different varieties of meeting, whether it's grade level buildings. It could be 612 content areas. We will take one month, and it'll be K-12 talking about content. There'll be an ELA rep from each grade level in a meeting, and a math person rep for each grade. You know, we have three sections, so there'll be a math, and then it's maybe science or social studies, but that's just something we'll have to figure out. But they want that, they want that opportunity to get together the K-12 to kind of see who's doing what with what as it relates to content. So through this process, really what it boils down to is a focus on learning in a collaborative environment with a focus on results. Looking at our data, not what we feel, what we know. What does that say? What does our state assessment say? What does ACT say? What does all the assessments you do, all those things, what does that say? And how is that driving instruction? How are kids learning? Are they learning or not? You know, what, those are the kind of conversations that we'll be building through this collaborative environment to really focus on results. Our presenter today talked about his building, or yesterday, where he, you know, they were both state average, just like us. Both state average, they looked good, but he knew it could be better. And within 10 years, they went from 54% of proficiency to 95% through this process. Not a CAN program, through a process of collaboration, focusing on learning and focusing on results. So I don't see any reason why we can't do that here, to be honest with you. But we just got to give them time to do that, because I know they'll make it happen. So that's what the main focus is, is it relates to curriculum instruction, is our accreditation model driving that bus through our action plan. Questions about this? Next is recruit, retain, hire, and quality staff. We did some production recruitment videos that we put together, some marketing materials. We continue with ongoing professional development, continue to focus on that certified and classified salaries. Employee benefits and the calendar committee continues to be a part of that conversation to see what's best for that. So we know we want to hire well and keep those people that we have. So doing those things to try to draw on good candidates. Parenting and community engagement, we have the facilities project that we've been working on, going to be working through with this next year to really identify programming needs throughout the district and having those conversations. So we'll talk more about that later. Deana continues her watchout group, bringing in parents, dads to do their thing, which is great to see them in the building and the recognition that they receive and goes on that. So, but we continue to just provide as many opportunities for parents to be involved as much as they want or engaged as much as they want. And we hope to grow through the professional learning communities that they become, more engaged in their academic part of this. And I think that will happen naturally as we go through that. And then just lastly, the alignment of services, kind of in a recap of things that we've accomplished here the last few years as a district and updates that we've done. I'm not going to go through all those, you can see those on there, but we did get the intercom system done. So, so we had that done. But you can see we have several projects that we've accomplished, so we go through that. So now these two, other items of consideration that we've been talking about with this facilities, looking at the blueprint and the footprint of the district, and things that we, you know, need to address at some point in the near future, these are the ones that stuck out through conversations. We have the three focus areas mainly for the possible bond project, which is early childhood, the middle school renovations and updates, and then looking at the ag program in that area over there, what could that look like and modeling that. But there's other things we need to address, the auditory, lighting, sound, drainage issues, HVAC, end-to-end life things that we need to start planning and preparing on as we go through that. So those are the four goals that we've addressed, you know, just kind of highlight real quick as we go through that. Is there any, you see any need to really, really reevaluate our board goals? To look at something else that we're missing, or the four that we have seem to be driving the bus pretty well?
I think everything's looking good.
Because we can go through it again if we'd like, I mean, at some time this year, if we, if we feel that need to look at a different goal. But I think these have been consistent, really helps focus and do that, so I think they've been working well. Okay, so get into the budget. I should say 25.6, sorry. Based on our assessed valuation from last year, we were at $29 million for our district for general fund, and now we're at 31. So it went up 2 million, basically. So with that increase comes the increase of possible, based on your mill levy, how that's set up. The base state aid for this new year is $5,615. Last year was $5,378. So when they talk about new money, that's kind of what that means, is new money, because the base went up based on the number of students and all the weighting factors that I've kind of mentioned earlier that go into building that budget. So with that, in the general fund, you look at about like 274,000 in new money, based on, depending on how enrollment lines out and things of that factor. It's not like written in stone, but it's an estimate of what that is. So when you put all the factors in to build that budget, in the open page and the numbers and everything, we're looking at an estimate of just 7.5 million for the general fund budget for our authority to spend. Not mean that we're going to spend all that, but it could be that authority depending on the audit as we start and go from there. So that's what we're looking at for the general fund moving into next year. Supplemental fund, which is another big fund, it takes in more factors on the assessed evaluation. We're at 40 million last year, we're at 42 as we factor in that. The base did go up as well on, for supplemental general. Again, the weightings and things are factored into that, that helps build this budget. And so we're looking at a 2.6, 2.4, excuse me, estimate for the general fund to provide support for the district as we look at that. We do a lot of things locally within the LOB to provide, you know, that's what that money's generating as we go through that. So that's how, based on assessed evaluation going up and the numbers that we put in the base, this is where we're estimating what our budget would be for LOB. So when you break it down into that code 99, I've shared all these forms with you to see as you look at it. So this is standard 20 mils, is the standard for general fund for the assessed evaluation based on that. So basically, it's our assessed evaluation times .0002, and we can figure out what, how much taxes are going to be raised based on the mill levy that's set at 20, and whatever assessed evaluation, you're looking around 620,000 in local taxes that would be generated from that mill levy at 20 mils in our assessed evaluation. Looking at the LOB, what we're studying at right now is 19.346. This is a little less than what we turned in to the county attorney in our recertification form. So we can go, we could be less than that when we turned in, we just can't be more than that as it relates to that. So we made adjustment with bond and interest when we met with Fred, and that kind of allowed us to move a little things to drop the mill levy a little bit compared to what it was turned in. So with that, we'd generate about 827,000 through the LOB based on, to do that. But to be revenue neutral, if we were to be revenue neutral, this is where the district would need to be at, the 7.237. And so that would generate this much, the 737,000. So based on, you know, assessed valuation going up, your mill levies are going up, that's why the big two mil difference in that. It's not based on where we ended up last year. You'll see we have a new, in the middle form, you'll see on that certification form, there's a middle that says where you should be to be revenue neutral, not where we were previous year. That was kind of a misconception, like, well, you need to be what you were yet, you know? But no, you need, based on your assessed evaluation, this is what mill you should be, and it's going to be less than what that was last year even. But when evaluations go up, it's hard to try to stay with that when we have things to deal with. So, so it is a little less than what we turned in right now is what's on that budget. So keeping a high capital outlay of 5.5 mils will generate just 235, or around 235,000. To be revenue neutral, we need to be at least at 5.288. Again, that's based on assessed evaluation, that's where those numbers come from. Bond and interest, we try to keep it fairly the same, I think, I might have dropped it just a hair. But we're, that bond, you know, Dustin talked about that, it's a healthy fund, so we don't need to increase that. But as we have these conversations in the future, what are we really looking at to try to do a no-mill-levy increase if we were to do a potential bond project down the road? So those are the kind of conversations that will bring people in to help us, guide us through that, and looking at, you know, how we take advantage of capital outlay, because we get about 60% state aid right now, capital outlay. With our current bond, we get about 60% too for state aid. But if we were to initiate a new bond, it'd be about 20% if not less when that happens. So we'll have to figure that out as a board, what the best option is for that as we move forward, so. But to be revenue neutral, that bond and interest is at 7.847, let's do that. Questions about where we're at with mils? Those are the three basic ones we have. Okay, you can see some increases that we have that are factored into the budget. With the major increase to the local assessment, you're looking at 308,000 plus. That's not written in stone in anywhere, that's still being evaluated, but this is what it writes out right now. So it'll be evaluated throughout the year as we go through that. We budgeted 10% on utilities, that's typical, salaries around four. Insurance is at 1.6, property insurance and food service, we budgeted at 3% and 5% increase with respect to it. So that's all built into that to do that, so. So here's a list of documents that are provided for you to go through and review for yourself. We're not going to go into them individually, but the Form 150 is just all that factors and all the calculations that go into building the budget as it relates to each fund that we have, general and LOB for that. So all those factors are taking into effect on that. You see the cash balances trends? It's going down a little bit for us. We've been about 18% on cash balance and just over 14, and that's really because of Three Lakes or because that big chunk is coming out of that. So, so we're going to monitor that, keep an eye on as we go through that and evaluate spending and things of that nature. Try, 14% is average, is where you want to be. We've been a little bit higher than that, it's because the district's been pretty healthy. But around 14, 15% is where you want to be with cash balances, so. The open page is what drives the budget, and so you have that for your information of what those numbers look like and what have been put in there. The statement of indebtedness talks about what the bond interest is, and that's what that payment was made today. We got it done, we're done for the year. We made our payment and our principal payment. But it shows you what that is for moving forward, how much is left. We're not able to pay that off, remember, early, because of the type of bond it is. So we'll just kind of manage that, again, working with some help from Bond Finance Company to really try to take advantage of that as best we can in the future, so. And then the district needs assessments made available to you. We did this at the end of the year sometime, really just showing what the needs are based on feedback from the admin team. So it just kind of helps drive that bus on the budget as well. So you should have access to that for your information. Questions about the budget? Always free, if you want to come one-on-one and we can talk through it, I'm happy to sit down with you and go through it. We do a lot of processes with, working with Fred Meyer from Greenbush. I build the budget, then he comes in and helps review that, then we take it to KSDE, and they review it as well. Patty and I go up there, and they, you know, it's just, all these checks are put in place to help districts to make sure we're doing okay. You know, we consistently, district has been strong financially, no major things to identify, can't think of just this.
What was the final add-on for Three Lakes? What was the money you were just talking about that we're going to have to do? What was that final amount? Increase?
Around 308,000, just depends on, just over that increase compared to last year. So, but again, that's not like written in stone, but it's an estimate of where that's at. So that's been, that was a major significant.
And maybe we'll cover this later, but did they figure out what changed?
Not yet.
Not yet.
No, so we'll talk about that in our Three Lakes update.
Okay.
So, but what we keep an eye on, cash balances, really evaluating spending and things. I mean, we're not hurting or anything, it's just that we just need to be cautious of that. And because of that chunk of what's coming from Three Lakes is a significant chunk of our budget, so, compared to what it's been in the past, so. So again, just a reminder, we'll have our revenue neutral hearing rate, or revenue neutral hearing at seven. We forgot, we moved meetings to seven o'clock, we submitted the form, so we're just, we'll have a regular meeting at six, and then when seven gets here, we'll just stop and do the hearing, and then for the R and R, and then do the budget hearing and approve the budget at seven. So we just went off what we had before, we're like, oh, we forgot, we moved to six. All right, that's all I have. Any questions about the budget? Okay.
Yep. Yeah, thank you. If no one has any questions, move on to the Architect feasibility study service proposal.
So Bobby Pearson and her partners with MultiStudio, partnership with MultiStudio has provided a feasibility study proposal for the board to consider for their services and looking at the future facilities of the district. You can see all the services that are to be included in that with, you know, looking at drawings that we have, we've kind of started that already. They're doing some digital copies of our blueprints and drawings. There'll be tours that they'll provide for stakeholders, looking at district leadership meetings, just like we did for the early childhood, something very similar to make sure voices are being heard, not just coming from the superintendent kind of thing. Those stakeholder focus groups, talk about proposed lands, plans and layout based on those conversations. Any updates to what we currently have for the early childhood, working with the city, the civil and coordination with civil and survey, just the cost development as we go through that, of what estimating costs will, which will really help make us, help make decisions about projects moving forward. Coming to board meetings, town hall meetings, renderings, you can see all that's included in that. The schedule is kind of a rough draft, that's a part of that. But you can see some of the exclusions that are part of, that won't be included in this as we move forward. So estimates are, the proposal, not estimate, is for 160.
So estimates are the proposal, not estimate, is for 161,000 for their services. This will be a kind of a pay-as-you-go, it's not going to be one lump sum, but as services are rendered, they'll be billing the district and to provide those services to help us plan and see what projects could look like as we go from that, so.
Is that a not to exceed 161,000?
I mean, that's what the board could say right tonight, if that's what part of, this is their proposal that they're providing, but it's not just going to be write them a check and it'll be based on services.
So like, for the early childhood development section, we wouldn't get charged again for that?
It's just looking at some, because there've been some conversations that happen.
Some changes.
Yeah, look at possible changes, it's not the major, Tyler, really, but, you know, just, it'll become part of that overall project, so it's just, they just want to make sure that it was included in that. But it won't be as much as compared to what this footprint is here to do that, is how I see that, but. But we could pay this out of capital outlay funds, which is a strong fund for us, architectural services can be paid out of that, so we have that, I mean, that's the possibility that we could use that for their services, so. But I thought they, you know, I really enjoyed working with them, you know, Bobby's local, she knows us, she knows our district, she has the best interests, I believe, in the district, and she's partnered with Multi Studio, has a lot of resources that can help us have these conversations and really look at it overall, so. So I'm recommending the proposal that's been provided by them.
These two, or these two buildings that they've mentioned, the ones they've built, they've?
I think, I know one of them is, maybe both of them that they've been partnered in, I can't remember, I think it was, I think they did both, I know one of them for sure. But I assume they've had some type of, you know, hand-in at some point, so, but just kind of see those visuals.
When we did the early childhood, it sounded like they may have not toured other buildings, but they provided, you know, images from buildings, aren't they the same buildings, or are they going to be different?
One's the same and one's a newer one that they, you know, looking at just kind of a district, kind of like, if I remember, one was more of an early childhood type setup, but it's just.
One's a whole district.
Yeah, yeah, so, but they, but they offered that when we did the early childhood, we just couldn't work it into the schedule to go tour it, so. But you can see that rough draft, the last page of what that schedule is, kind of what they're thinking, really just depending on how things go, but they're ready to get going and really start working through the phases with the board.
Does that schedule align with having it ready to vote?
That's, I mean, that, we didn't want to get that far ahead till we, like, we're moving forward, and then we'll start, that'll be part of this timeline of where this vote could possibly happen, and based on the three months that we could put it to a vote or whatever. So Bobby and I did talk about that, but once we do that, then we will try to establish when that, you know, to submit for, trying to get approval for the bond, for the vote, so, but we did discuss that.
And with our ag teacher, so it's in the stakeholder focus group, obviously, is that going to be the one that we have?
Yeah, so I've already, you know, we asked him to kind of draw up plans of what he had at Merit Design to see if something similar could be that, just because, you know, he knows what those things are, work good for him, but, yeah, he's going to be part of the conversation, yeah, he was more than happy to do that.
So we need to make a motion on that?
Yes.
Anyone have any questions? You guys want to do a not to exceed 161, or do you want to just do?
I think we should.
I mean, if they, if we go to exceed, we'll just have to come back and vote on it again, so we might as well put it in place and then.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Architect Feasibility Study Service Proposal in the amount not to exceed $161,000.
Second.
Carson.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Lowmeyer.
Aye.
Kepinstoll.
Aye.
Tice.
Aye.
Bagan.
Aye.
Clinton.
Aye. So just kind of, in September, we'll start talking about looking at bond finance companies and things, you know, what that option is, and the construction management service is more about education in that, so we know what those options are. Again, this is the first time I've been through this, so it'll help, you know, us to learn this together as we go through that, what those options are. But we will have that in September, working with the architects and kind of, you know, laying these things as pieces as we go. I know some people want to really get it going fast, but we really want to just kind of, I don't want to go too fast, but.
I just want to make sure we're going through the right process.
Yeah, sure.
And because at the end of the day, it's our facilities that we need to be proud of, it's going to help with the whole recruit, retain portion of it all, too, so.
And so we'll have, we'll do education next month on bond financing and construction management services.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, high school cross-country and baseball cooperative with Burlingame.
So just want to, they're just requesting again to participate with us, like they have the last year in those two areas, so they would like to continue that for this upcoming school year.
Just a question on the baseball side, are we, did we put something in there that they have to provide a coach, or is that?
We don't have anything written, it's just.
We don't have anything written?
Yeah, we just, there's that third coach that we have built in there, we just don't fill it, and they provide it.
Okay.
As they go through that, so.
I just didn't know, I couldn't remember where we.
Yeah, we don't have anything in writing, this, that, they would just provide that.
Yeah.
But, go ahead, sorry. It's just still on our supplemental, you know, as a numbers position, that the third coach or second assistant, but we don't have it filled, sorry.
You're good, I was just going to ask if the coaches are okay with that again?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, AD's coaches are all good to go, so I think we have one cross-country kid that participates with us, and then, I don't, we're not sure how many baseball will be at the time, but, but yes, they're on board with that.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the cooperative for cross-country and baseball with Burlingame for the 25, 26 school year.
Second.
Bagan.
Aye.
Tice.
Aye.
Carson.
Aye.
Kepinstoll.
Aye.
Clinton.
Aye.
Lowmeyer.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
All right, high school construction class donation.
So Josh received a $700 donation from the grant for American Association of Woodturners, so he's going to use that as some equipment that he has, so, but any donation, the board needs to approve for that use of those funds, so, that's what that is.
Did you say he already had it executed?
Yeah, he was already processing the order, so he wanted to get it in, so.
It's the American Association of Woodturners?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a donation from the American Association of Woodturners in the amount of $700 for the high school construction class.
Officer.
Clinton.
Aye.
Carson.
Aye.
Kepinstoll.
Aye.
Lowmeyer.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Bagan.
Aye.
Tice.
Aye.
Three Lakes report.
We had a meeting on Monday, mainly just to wait, elected new officers, kept the same officer, Jamie Bowman from Burlingame, president, Jennifer Hamlin from Linden, vice president, and then most of the rest of the meeting was discussing a new interim director, which we've tentatively gotten one hired, working up a contract right now, she's going to work part-time, three days a week or so, and she's going to focus mainly on the budget, try to get that budget back to where it should be. And so, I don't know if we can announce her.
No, I don't, it's just identified somebody.
Yeah, so we've got somebody on the, basically on the hook to, she's excited, she's ready, she's worked with the Three Lakes before, knows a lot of the, a lot of the supers, a lot of the principals, so I think it's a good move, she's planning on working, she said she'd work up to a year, and as soon as we get our feet on the ground here in a few weeks, we'll put out the applications for a full-time director. Anything else to add?
Yeah, so, no, it's just, they'll post that and hopefully have it filled by December, January for the next school year, so it'll just be an interim position throughout for the remainder of the year, but again, like Jim said, the focus will be budget, but she will provide support for employment, things of that nature, she'll need to do that as well, but really leave it to the assistant director to help manage that, but she will still over that.
I'm excited, she's going to get us back on our feet, mostly figure out, maybe lower this assessment a little bit for us.
So how is the investigation and the budget going that we approved?
I mean, nothing's really happened until we get this taken care of, that's been the main focus, and then we can start diving into that as with her, based on her experience and things of that nature, so.
Okay.
But we'll meet with her as soon as she gets going and talk her through that, but they need to get that done first, so that's been the primary focus, so.
So obviously, with the being part-time, that'd be an impact to budget salary-wise, right?
Right, it sure will, it'll save us a little money on directors' pay, so, it'll help out a lot, actually.
Have they lost a lot of employees in the last?
They've lost a few, yeah.
Yeah, a few last-minute resignations, too, so it's, I'm learning how to get some people hired right now.
But all positions, well, that's, all positions will be evaluated to really, I mean, we have to follow the IEP, so there's going to be times when, you know, Tim's caseload has jumped with new enrollments, so we have to, with one teacher right now and 20-some kids, we're going to have to evaluate that, and, you know, it's just going to have to look at it, and, but, I mean, but we have to provide the services legally, so, there's things that might have to happen, not just with us, but throughout the district, but it will be, it will be scrutinized and really evaluated to see the need there, so, but we have to provide the service legally, so.
Have we lost any that's impacted us?
I don't think so.
Well, I mean, we lost, I mean, just with transfer, we lost, you know, the high school position.
Mixed foot.
But nothing that's happened at all?
Not, not over summer, yeah.
We got a scramble to get covered.
Well.
Uh-oh.
We lost a, you'll see, but we're losing one, that's, it's our aide that we're having that's going to go work for Three Lakes, so that affects, based on an open position that they have, so it'll be a domino effect.
Okay.
So, but nothing other than that, Tyler.
All right, thank you. Building reports. Are we all excited for our first day at school this week?
Yes, I'm so excited.
Fantastic.
We'll be more excited after tomorrow night, so let's just say that.
Who's cooking hot dogs? Heck, yeah.
Burn on my fingernails tomorrow, so I'll get scorched, but.
Nina, did you need a donation of drinks for tomorrow night?
No, White's going to provide that for us, so that was nice, but I do have requisition for yet for the watchdog party, so.
Mr. Kimball's getting to know his staff, you know, it's been time, he's going to have some recommendations for you September, it relates specifically to cell phone and eligibility, but he's still, he met with the staff, so he's not, he just kind of got it together today, but we'll share that to you by the end of this week in my update of what he's thinking, and then we'll take action on that. It'll be kind of what they, it's not much of a change that's going to really affect anything, but it'll be in place, but he's still trying to get to know staff and get feedback from them and to do that, so those things are lining up, I guess I don't need to speak for you, but.
You did a good job.
So are we going to kind of use August as like peeling our way through any necessary changes that need to be made in regard to the phones?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, when we start, we'll start that way, the way we're not changing it, you know, in the middle of the game.
Okay.
And I'll talk to, in fact, I sent out the, what we had discussed and stuff, but once kids come Monday, I'll meet with every class, like I've always done, on the first period of each block, and then just talk to them about those changes and stuff, so just to make sure, one, they hear from me, two, to make sure we're all on the same page moving forward.
Does that need to apply to middle school the same then, or do we have the same issues with cell phones?
No, Tim has his thing, and he does it.
Okay.
We don't, they put them in their lockers at the beginning of the day, and they kick them out at the end. That's, I mean, Mrs. Paul doesn't really have that problem, so. It's an easier transition for me, because I, they don't have them in elementary, so.
They do have them in the elementary, but it's pretty much what he said, when they get lined up, ask for them to put them in the book bag and not get them back out until the end of the day.
And then I heard about, like, an issue with buses this week, possibly, like, tech bus, no, no issues on Monday?
Oh, well, the new students, yeah, the driver forgot that he was.
Get all that squared away?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I was like, what? No, yeah, but that was just for the orientation, I guess, so we just, it was a miscommunication, so.
Okay, but everything's been good?
Yeah, yeah, so he's in place, and, but that was, that was unfortunate, so.
Any other questions regarding the building reports? Superintendent report.
All right, so talking about a little bit on my budget, just that enrollment update, hopefully you have access to that. Again, I put a little asterisk of what that number is, that's what's coming out of Power School for enrollment on Friday, it's not accurate, I know the, I think the elementary and middle school are pretty close, but high school, I mean, once we get somebody in place, we'll get that. But I'll let you know when that gets updated, have a better idea of what enrollment is, so. Gained several kids, is what we're hearing, and what I'm hearing, losing some kids, so I'm anticipating pretty flat overall as it looks for, as it goes towards enrollment, so. But I'll be updating you as we get those squared away and finalized with that, so. So we've had a busy two days, well, really three days, with orientation on Monday and having no internet, and Cory and PJ, Cory and PJ are looking at my phone to go over the agenda, because I can't print out an agenda for them, and, and so that's kind of a wild start to a busy week, and, but orientation went well, getting our new staff kind of acclimated to how we do things and introductions to go through that. Tuesday was a full day of professional learning communities, our PLC consultant met with our groups, we started the day with just some welcome and introductions, and then he kind of did a keynote to kind of talk about, you know, what the PLC is, I guess you could say that, with the whole group. Jim was here, what'd you have, what's your thoughts on, Jim? I mean.
Sounded pretty interesting, I was, guy did a great job, I was very excited, actually, the prospect of what we could be doing.
Yeah, so this is really, this learning by doing is going to be our guide with our building leadership teams and overall the district leadership team, that's all it is, is a guide, there's, it's not a how-to, it's a guide, there's some things that, you know, that you can look through and see, but it really has to fit us as a district of collaboration, evaluating data, you know, making adjustments, you know, plan, study, act, all those things. So, so he did the keynote, and then we broke off, he met with the elementary staff and did some kind of modeling of what, you know, a PLC looks like with them while that was going on, Tim and Scott met with their building and their building level meetings, and then came back at lunch, and he met with the secondary staff and did something similar but different, because this is a different conversation, elementary's different than secondary. And so we did some modeling with that of what it is to look like in a PLC, just picking general topics. You know, it really, there's, it's a different conversation right now as of day one, elementary compared to secondary. You know, elementary's talking about curriculum and standards, and, you know, they think they're ready for that, and that's where that focus will need to be. The building leadership team at the end of the day, they really started identifying maybe some areas of focus or themes, whereas in the high school and middle school, it's really looking at culture, is where that's coming from, is where kind of what that's generated based on what had happened at the end of the day. So, but it really kind of showed, you know, how you could go and build consensus, you know, allow voices to be heard and just be a part of that, so you can come and start working together through that to do what's best for kids, and really grow achievement as you go through that. So it's not cookie cutter, it's really, I mean, because we, you know, we're not big, we're not small, but we have a lot of singletons, you know, Ms. Lieber's like, you know, I'm all by myself over there, and I don't feel like I could get to talk to anybody, but if I'm part of a group, I can be connected, I can know what's going on, whether it's science or math, and I can incorporate those things that are going on in my class, but if I don't know about it, I don't, I'm not going to do it. But if I'm involved in some type of community, then, but we have a lot of singletons, we share staff between the two buildings, what does that look like? And so we have to build that model to really address, you know, our needs, and it can't come top-down, I refuse to make it top-down, it has to come from bottom up. They're the ones in the trenches, there's the one in the classroom, we need to figure out what that is, we will support it as an admin team, provide the resources, if that's what's, whatever's identified, but it's just really looking at that, but we don't want to get off in the weeds. I mean, cell phones are important, but that's not, that's not who we are, that's not, I mean, ACT, state assessments, you know, post-secondary success, all those data points are where we're, that's what we are. You know, eligibility's important, but that's not what we are, you know, those academic-focused conversations is what we'll get to, and it's going to be, it's going to take a little bit, it's going to take some time. There is a lot of worry about clarity of what's our role, because it's, you know, you go do this, you know, that's the way it used to be, you know, but now it's, no, you tell us what you need. And it's gonna be, it's gonna take a little bit, it's gonna take some time. There is a lot of worry about clarity of what, what's our role? 'Cause it's, you know, you go do this, you know, that's the way it used to be, you know, but now it's, no, you tell us what you need through conversations with your group, and so it's, it's, you know, that's what they're expecting is top-down management, and that's not, not how it's gonna work. I mean, I have ideas and thoughts, you know, where focuses should be, but we'll work as an admin team to help maybe drive that a little bit and put it on the table, but it really has to come from the buildings to do that. So, and the board's gonna play an important role in that, you know, we are that, you know, we build this professional learning community to get where we're at with our board goals. That's really where that's, you know, comes from, and that, you know, you're a part of this just as well, of that focus on learning is really what it stems to, so it's still, I think there's still some clarity of what we're supposed to do, but it's not, it's not a canned program. It's really gonna have to be built as we take time to do that, and we're gonna, we're gonna provide a guide, that collaboration timeline of, you know, you know, Tim and I talked today, like, we're gonna ask for products at the end of the day, you know, whatever that, whatever meeting you had or something, you're gonna have to submit something to show whatever you were doing to do that, and, you know, eventually we might have to do that, but this first year, that's what's gonna have to happen, just so we can really help be aware of what's going on, but to make sure the focus is on what the focus needs to be, and I see those conversations changing as we provide this more opportunity to go through that, so. Do you guys have anything to add about?
I was just gonna say, I think so many times when we did professional development, there's always something that we take back and immediately we start utilizing, and this is just, it's a process, and I think that's what's really hard for like my staff anyhow, is because they wanted something right now, let's get, you know, that kind of thing, and, and it's a process, it's not gonna be done right away. This just kinda gives you an idea, when we started to discuss things yesterday, it was just, we had preschool and kindergarten was sitting right next to them and they were like, kindergarten was like using uppercase or capital letters and lowercase, that, they started to talk about that as one of our examples, and I was like, well, do you guys use uppercase as your definition, uppercase letters or do you use capital letters? And they were like, we use capital letters, and I said, well, you probably better ask preschool what, what, and then the conversation was like, oh my gosh, preschool uses big letters, capital letters, uppercase letters, and so then we start thinking, how confusing that is for three and four-year-olds. So that's kind of where we're going with this, because we don't have the time for those kind of conversations, so those monthly meetings are going to be very, very critical, I think, in what we do in our buildings, so. So thank you for that extra time. I mean, I really do feel we're gonna utilize that to our abilities.
As long as it's intentional.
Right.
And it's impactful, yeah, absolutely.
That's what, you know, some of the thing, you know, like, they're like, wanting to see results, I was like, it's gonna be three years before we really see our data start to change based on this, I mean, that's just typical, but if those kinda conversations are going on, we're gonna see change, because the right hand knows what the left hand's doing and we're working on this, you know, vertically, you know, at the grade levels, they know what they wanna teach, you know, that's what we gotta start, and then they can go tell the other groups, this is what we're teaching, and so how that work, I mean, but it's, it's that time to do that, so.
No, I mean, I think our big conversation was, we're already good at what we do, but how do we take that next step to be great? That's the big thing. We can, we can always do, we can always do better, there's always something to work on, so that was our big, big conversation, I think, is finding ways to work together.
Yeah.
A lot of positive feedback from our consultant, you know, about our consultant, just, I had one teacher said, I've been here 20 years and we've never had this type of conversation, and I remember when I first taught, Amy and I were kind of, when I started, started talking about PLCs, she goes, well, Mr. Stoppel tried to do that back in the day, but it was just like, here's PLC, go do it, you know, it wasn't, they weren't given the tools, and, and so, so we're kinda hopefully giving the tools to really do this and, and really have a different type of conversation, but we're gonna continue to partner with our consultant, just to, you know, here and there, check-ins and things to help provide us as admin team guidance, and if we need to bring him back, then we'll do that, you know, down the road, but, but he'll be available to us. We have a lot of resources from Solution Tree, which provides, provides the professional learning community's content, a lot of resources for not just the admin team, but our building leadership teams that we can provide, so, again, but it's not just like, here, go do this, it's figure it out together.
But Speaker, will we be able to have him back to?
Oh, yeah, he's, yeah, we're gonna, he kinda builds that partnership with districts as we go through, but, but we'll use him as needed kinda thing, so, but, but he was dynamic and, and, you know, he's like, when he talked about preschool, their theme was conflict resolution. That was their theme, and he's like, wasn't even academic, you know, and then kindergarten is doing that, you know, but that's just, it's just, you know, that's, preschool is social, that's what that is, and, and so, you know, so if you knew that going up, then high schoolers are like, well, in preschool, you had conflict resolution, you know, it just takes like, I mean, just as you, you know, learning those things, so, but it's, it's really about providing the time to get to the table, to have focused conversation, not just complain about kids or, you know, do a field trip schedule or, you know, all those things. You still got, I mean, building management, you still have to do this, but this is about instruction, that's where the focus is, and you still have to have those things to make your, you know, safe and orderly environment, those building management thing, but it's transitioning to that conversation to be more about learning as opposed to doing, and so that's, and that's what this is, you know. You know, to me, if you, if it's important enough to put in front of a kid an assignment, a project or something, it's important that they learn it and not just do it, that they learn it, and so let's find out what they need to learn and focus on that, and we'll, we'll see achievement, I believe, with the group we have, start going up, because we have more time to do that, so. Thanks for sharing, Mr. Kimball, good job.
You want me to say so?
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, kinda like them, our conversations were similar, I think yesterday, their goal, they say yesterday, was based on building a professional learning community that's built on collaboration, Indian pride and community, they're real big on, on building that community, and I think focusing on that first will allow us to move forward and to have another conversations, I think, you know, yesterday, the beginning conversations, obviously focused a lot on some policy things, but as they go through and, and we work with them and kinda guide them on having, how to have those conversations, they'll become more focused on academic and instruction and really what we need to, it's just, it takes a little time, but I think the staff yesterday, and Amy and today, were excited about starting that process and really figuring out, you know, kinda what their roles are and how all this kinda works together and, and, you know, how it's really built, I think, you know, them really understanding that they're being empowered to go do what they do and to be great and to bring those ideas to the table and be part of that collaborative team, and then we support whatever it is that they need individually, you know, they're, they're professionals and we happily, we hire the very best and empower them to go be great, and, and that's kinda what we talked about yesterday, kinda what they, I'm kinda led through when we had our collaboration over there yesterday. It'll be exciting, a lot of work, but it's exciting.
All right, just lastly, Mr. Ice just wanted to share with the board, he'd like to, to take the kids to the convention in October. I don't know if we've had to approve those or not, so I'm just more of an aware, I think it's okay if I just approve it, but he wants to do that, but it's more just what kinda the plan is, he doesn't have a lot of the details, but just more of an awareness for you guys that he would like to start doing that for some of our kids for the convention, the national convention in October, so it's more of an awareness for you guys, so.
How many kids is that?
I don't know, that's why he's not on the details, you know.
Six to eight.
It was a six-day, I was thinking five to six, but I can't remember, so.
He put six to eight. I, I think it's a good opportunity. Doesn't look like he's planning on being there the whole time.
Yeah, but it's just more of an awareness that this is coming on, so if you see that, so.
I think it's great.
Yeah, good. So that's all I have, it's just we're ready for school, looking forward to a great school year. Excited for kids to be here Friday and get rolling next week full-time.
That's great. All right, any other questions? I lost where I was.
Okay.
All right, if no one has anything else, good luck for the school year, be awesome. I move that we go into executive session to discuss supplemental positions, certified positions, and classified positions pursuant to the non-alaudino personnel exception under coma, and the open meeting will resume here in the library at, we'll say 7:20, elect have the superintendent present.
Second.
Moire.
Hi.
Lynn.
Hi.
Ice.
Hi.
Carson. Began.
Hi.
Eppenstam.
Hi.
Carson.
Hi.
All right, we are back in open session. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resignations of Tiffany Roberts as the High School Secretary. Shager Dunbar as the High School NHS sponsor. Madison Curse as the preschool teacher aide. I'd also make recommendations or approve the recommendations of Jeff Savage as a middle school head basketball boys basketball coach. Lynn Tice as the high school assistant girls basketball coach. Danaa Linz as the preschool teacher aide. Katani Clark as the high school secretary. Um, approve the recommendation for compensation package for IT coordinator. Um, approve raises recommendations for the classified and the administrator positions. And approve the classified agreement handbook as recommended. Second. Aye.
Fagan.
Aye.
Linton.
Aye.
Carson.
Aye.
Lowmeyer.
Aye.
Tice.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
All right, I'd like to make a rec or like to make a motion uh to go into executive session to discuss negotiation topics pursuant to the uh exemption for employer employee negotiations under coma. And the opening will resume here in the library at we'll say eight o'clock uh with the superintendent present please. Second.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Lowmeyer.
Aye.
Eppenstow.
Aye.
Tice.
Aye.
Fagan.
Aye.
Linton.
Aye.
All right, we are back in open session. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resignations of Tiffany Roberts as the high school secretary, Shager Dunbar as the high school NHS sponsor, Madison Curse as the preschool teacher aide. I'd also make a recommendation or approve the recommendations of Jeff Savage as a middle school head basketball, boys' basketball coach, Lynn Tice as the high school assistant girls' basketball coach, Bania Linz as the preschool teacher aide, Katani Clark as the high school secretary.